...special holiday, there's a governmental body, the City Council, will be out in the evening. And then the Police Committee is having a meeting as well. And I responded to this favor. And I told her, following, I said, "Thanks for your email. I always appreciate the opportunity to answer questions and see feedback from our residents." City offices are closed, the meetings canceled on 10 holidays during each year. They're showing on the calendar night, they center that calendar. The 10 holidays do not include those days that are recognized by one individual. This is the case on Saturday. Many local municipalities do not follow the federal holiday schedule when a journeying which stays closed and canceled meetings. The city has maintained this holiday schedule for years. There's been one discussion of increased days for your folks. As you've noted, we pay respect for the elderly and junior. I promote the holiday and I recommend you might rest in as quickly as you may with personal reflection. As a side note, increase in holidays is a disproportionate reason. An additional cost to local municipalities. We would still maintain lease and certain public work services. And we would need to pay those additional wages and benefits for holiday time. And I told her she had any additional questions, she'd call me at City Hall. I had not heard back from her. And today I sent her another email asking her if there was anything that I still needed to respond to, and I had not heard back from her. And that's my communication.
Um, hey Mayor, I apologize, we have an additional communication. Just got one from Bonnie Casera, there's no sound on Channel 6.
It's fixed.
Is it?
Yeah.
You know, I just got this text message from a minute ago, so just to let you know.
Yeah, thank you.
Got it.
Okay. Um, if there's no further communications, Lester? Lester Vaughn?
Yeah. Thank you Mayor. Just one, one, uh, I have one thing. Uh, I think some, a couple, a few of the teachers reached out in District 61. And they're, they're wondering, wondering what the vaccination process was going to be like for teachers in our area? If they were gonna, if there's gonna be a drive-through facility popping up pretty soon for them to partake in the vaccination? So they wish, they were just asked, they were, they were concerned about, uh, when they were going to be vaccinated, get their vaccinations.
Alden and Vaughn, I was going to be reporting that under my mayor's report. But I will tell you that I had a conversation last week with Superintendent Legman from District 61. Um, there was a meeting, uh, with the, um, local superintendents. What they're looking to do, Lester, is they're looking to establish Downers Grove South, and Downers Grove North, and Hinesdale South, and Hinesdale Central as test, as vaccination, um, centers. Because the schools have capacity to have the doses there to refrigerate the juices. And there's, um, you know, it's a large, a larger facility. And according to Mr. Legman, or, he wanted to know if the city would like to be a part of that. Because starting Monday, January 25th, all frontline and 65 and older's to become eligible to the shot. And the Health Department has said that what they would do is they would supply those four schools with 3,000 doses a week for a number of weeks. So Mr. Legman's staff would be able to go over to Hinesdale South High School and get their shots, their vaccinations over there. And District 63, uh, would be able to go over there as well as District 66. So they're looking to establish that now. Bond said that he would get back to me, they were going to have this village meeting, um, Downers Grove, uh, and all those, you know, surrounding communities, but I did not burst from them. So I'm telling you something that she and I discussed on Wednesday or Thursday last week. So it's my hope that they're really going to do this. Because Karen Apple, the Executive Director of the Health Department, indicated that she would get at least 3,000 doses to those, to the schools, that they be able to administer those shots. So it's my hope that our teachers, our teaching staff, and some of our, and our public workers, and our police, and our fire department, be able to reach those schools and get their shots sometime in the near future. That might answer some of those questions. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right. Um, that brings me to the mayor's report. And under item A, consideration of motion to approve the reappointments of Hilda Gonzalez, Brian Gay, and Alvin Malus to the planning of zoning committee. These are all people that have been on the committee. And I have talked to all of them in the on-seek to return to the committee. By my commission to approve those reappointments. Alden Belzak, sending back Alden Vaughn, any questions? If not, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Those appointments, uh, will be made, as I told you, coming in, we'll be inviting clerk Verona to get their swin, get their swin bring in done. And again, I want to thank them for their continued service to the city. Also, on the mayor's report, um, to piggyback on Alden Vaughn's question regarding vaccine distribution. Uh, we are receiving a number of written and verbal questions regarding the distribution of the coronavirus vaccine. As a recipient of information from the Page County Health Department, the CDC, and other agencies, I can only share that which I know. And I can assure you that City Council will continue to put out information as soon as it becomes available to us. For just a brief update, as of January 15th, which was Friday, the state of Illinois has received 716,475 doses of the vaccine, which does not include over 250,000 doses administered to long-term care facilities through federal programs. Those are CVS and Walgreens. The Page County, the CDC, 33,950 doses, and has vaccinated 9,314 individuals, primary health care providers. Last week, Governor Chris Reddick announced the state in the Florida, the Minnesota City area, same plan, the Congress of the National Providers come and headline as the state moves to complete Phase 1A, which, you know, Phase 1A are the healthcare providers. The state anticipates completing Phase 1A by Monday, January 25th, at which time those in Phase 1B, including all those over the Page 65 and frontline workers, will be eligible. The state is partnering with large pharmacies, pharmacies, large hundreds of new sites and communities across the state. Additionally, the Illinois National Guard will deploy two teams, new sites could come. As we move forward, the state's planning to continue to build out capacity by using smaller, independent pharmacies, urgent care clinics, doctors' offices, and various workplaces. More information, uh, will be launched, uh, on the only department of public health website prior to the start of the Phase 1B, which is January 25th. Um, my personal advice is to contact your personal care provider to see if they will be administering the vaccine through our office. I've already been contacted by mine, and he has told me that when he receives the vaccine, he will call me and I'll be eligible to come in and get the shot. Um, the problem that a lot of people don't understand is we were anticipating receiving more doses. Uh, that just hasn't happened. The federal stockpile, um, was possibly not released, as they had indicated. I'm not putting any blame on anybody in particular, but, um, we just haven't received the doses that we need. And just to give an idea, in the 65 and older category in the state of, in the state, uh, in the state of Illinois, there are 268,000 of us in the state of Illinois, 65 and older. So that's, if you figure two doses, that's, that's, you know, close to 500,000 doses that we need just for our group. Um, and I would call your personal care provider, I've been telling people that. And again, any information that I get, I'm going to share with you guys, and I'm going to share with, um, the public and the community. And then I just, I wanted to finish by just saying, uh, that the omnibus bill, the criminal justice reform bill, you should have a copy of the summary statement. You have to take, if it's actively signed by the governor, it takes, uh, July 1st, 2021, the serial conditions having later effective dates. I would also let you know that, and I think I put this in my EPL2 today, that due to page matters and managers, by Alden's objection, uh, not so much, well, partially to the content, but also to the process, because we were informed of this by our lobbyists last week. And we felt that not being able to have any impact, we were going to be mandated to absorb costs and personnel issues related to the bill was inappropriate. And so the letter that we sent was signed by IML, was signed by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, including Mayor Lightfoot. And each one of us stated in that letter that it, that we don't, we were, we thought the process, we thought probably was wrong. We asked, uh, the state legislature to consider bringing this up when the new legislature was, was, uh, but the bill was passed at 4:29 in the morning, Wednesday morning, and now it was wasted on the signature. So please read that document I sent you, and if you have questions, uh, please let me know. And finally, um, some sad news. Uh, I've been informed of the passing of Robert Klein. Bob Klein was in 2011 during Citizen of the Year. Um, Bob was involved, uh, with the General Rotary. He was involved, uh, he was on the Darren Woodridge Fire Protection Board. And, uh, he was just on a whole plethora of activities in our community. So we, our condolences go out to the Bob's family. I don't know if any of you knew Bob, I knew Bob pretty well. Uh, for those of you who weren't aware, that Bob was the owner of Award Emily and Bowling Book. Uh, a lot of the trophies that you see given out at parades and events were produced by Award Emily. So our, again, our condolences to Bob's family. And that's, uh, my mayor's report for tonight. And it takes us to Jerome, uh, the City Council here.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Uh, then we move to Mr. Vanas.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. I take this to Department of Information questions. Do you have any questions to Chief Thomas or Mr. Van, or Mr. Gombeck? Or do the chief or Mr. Gombeck have anything they want to update us on?
I was asked a question about, um, per, um, public seeing arrests in the newspaper and, uh, about cannabis arrests, you know, especially involving a driver or passenger. The law is, um, very, uh, specific and very easy. Cannabis cannot be contained, or cannabis has to be contained in a sealed, uh, odor-proof, child-resistant container. Yeah, uh, very simple. So when you buy it, it's sold in a sealed, odor-proof, child-resistant container, so just keep it in there until you get home. And then if you open it, do not transport it, because if it's open and it can be smelled, it's enough probable cause to search the car and recover the, um, item. So even if it's purchased legally, it cannot be in there. So the, the statute, again, is very specific. No driver may possess cannabis within any area of a motor vehicle on the highway in this state except in the sealed, odor-proof, child-resistant cannabis container. It's very simple.
Any questions for Chief Thomas?
Good. Right. Yeah, Chief, yeah, I was the one that asked you on that. So it sounds like then that these individuals, you know, I looked at some of the websites of some of the, the, the stores and stuff that are selling it, and they do try to, uh, push that with individuals to make sure they know the rules. So they're just not following the rules when they're transporting it. Now, what if they're, they purchase it, don't purchase it at a store? They're buying it from some, somebody off the street?
Then that's illegal in and of itself, but it's hard to tell, you know, without a DNA process where that, um, yeah, I want it originated from. So the assumption is, is, um, it's just illegal by not being in that contain.
So I assume the best thing is for them to put it in their trunk?
Exactly.
When, when they're traveling, going home with the product.
Correct. Well, then, if they purchased the product and it's in that, um, sealed container, then it's not going to be a problem, because you can't smell it.
Right.
Um, once you open that seal, now you got a problem.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Sure.
Mr. Gombeck, do you have anything you want to update us on? You're on mute.
I apologize. No updates at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan.
Question? How we, how we looking at, I'm getting questions lately, how we get, looking on the Dunkin' Donuts on the corner?
Actually, we're hoping to have power this week. There's been an issue with, uh, ComEd and what's referred to as CT cabinets. So that's been going on for about, uh, almost four weeks now. It just got resolved late this afternoon. Uh, so ComEd will be, uh, turning the power on and putting the meters on. So I'm hoping that by the end of the month, mid-February, uh, we'll see Dunkin' Donuts opening. So I have to confirm that, but they have drew some drywall left, and whatever heat-related issues that were due to no electricity, uh, may have set them back.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to complement Alden Sullivan. Um, Mary was quite persistent in following with Phil Halliburton regarding the outages themselves of our areas of government in my subdivision. And on New Year's Day, yours truly answered the door to, um, someone from S-1. S-1 is a company that does all the tree trimming in, uh, for Commonwealth Forest. And I was informed that S-1 was going to be coming out in Lake Chandler, constantly the Lake River, to trim all the trees along the Kearney Road behind my house, which are, to a certain extent, a great cause of the outages with the, the branches. And I was asked in particular, do you give permission for them to cut a very healthy branch of a very large tree in my backyard, uh, which sits right over a power line? Um, the gentleman didn't know I was the mayor of the city of Durham, so we were communicating as if I was just a regular resident, and in that case I was. And, uh, I thanked him for his work. And I just wanted to thank Mary because, because of your efforts, we're going to get those trees trimmed, and hopefully we'll be able to diminish those outages. So kudos to Mary, thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Um, that takes us to the Treasury Report, uh, Treasury Coroner.
Uh, thank you Mayor. This evening we've got three warrants, we missed a couple of meetings. So first, I'm requesting a council's approval of warrant number 202116, in the amount of Payroll for the period ended December 17th, in the amount of $243,216.26, for a total to be approved of $686,387.21.
Motion to approve. Alden Sullivan, second, and Alden Belzak, any questions? If we're down to roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay. Next, we've, yeah. Uh, next we've got warrant number 202117, requesting approval, uh, from the listed funds in the amount of $61,107.20. Payroll for the period ended December 31st, in the amount of $279,090.40, for a total to be approved of $340,197.60.
Motion to approve. Alden Kennedy, second, and back Alden Shower, questions? If not, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Bell?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Uh, that warrant's been approved, Mike?
Last, but not least, requesting council's approval of warrant number 202118, in the amount of $759,848.85 from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended January 14th, in the amount of $278,911.73. The total to be approved of $1,038,760.58.
Motion to approve. Alden Belzak, second, and back Alden Vaughn, any questions for the Treasury? If not, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
That warrant's been accepted. Uh, Mike, the monthly report for December 2020?
Okay, uh, yes, included in your packet are the monthly reports for both November and December, but to avoid repetition here, I'm just going to be, uh, reading the monthly report for the eight months ended December 31st. Uh, reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of a million, $11,973,992. Spenditures of $8,382,271. Current fund balance of $4,557,256. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $4,157,604. Spenditures of $4,846,331. Current fund balance of $200, $2,770,797. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $1,011,25. Spenditures of $254,696. Current balance of $1,315,300. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $6,114. Spenditures of $15,604. Current balance of $2,429,504. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $246,605. Spenditures of $566,951, for current balance of $6,322,180.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, that takes us to, uh, standing, maybe, of course, and if you all of them have any a report. Mary?
Um, just wanted to let everyone know that the next Economic Development Committee meeting will be Thursday, February 4th at 7:00 PM. Um, and the format of that is to be determined. Um, and I think I pointed this out perhaps, um, at our last meeting, but it might not have. The, uh, pattern of the EDC meetings have changed. It is now the first Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM. Um, the Admin Finance Committee will meet on Monday, February 1st, um, at 6:00 PM prior to the City Council meeting. And the intended, uh, budget workshops for next fiscal year, um, are started to, are planning to start to begin on Wednesday, February 17th. And, um, for the weeks following that, every Wednesday until the budget's been completed.
You, what else? Alden Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this evening's Police Committee meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items. Our next scheduled meeting, uh, well, we have a meeting on the 15th, it's President's Day.
No, we meet on the 16th, on Tuesday.
Our, our next scheduled Police Committee meeting will be 6:00 PM next Tuesday, February 16th, pending, uh, agenda items.
Thank you. Alden Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next Municipal Services Committee meeting is currently scheduled for next Monday, January 25th, at 7:00 PM, uh, presumably via Zoom.
Thank you. Um, one additional EDC note, uh, at our first meeting in February 18th, EDC will be giving you a report on the progress and work of the EDC over the last year and a half. You'll hear that, she was going to do that tonight, but we rescheduled that for the first meeting in February. And just to let you know to bring it up to date, uh, the EDC's been meeting and discussing with the Chamber of Commerce on the development of this strategic plan and the future of the Chamber of Commerce in the city of Durham. Questions and comments, agenda-related? I don't believe there's anybody in the audience. I don't believe there's anybody in the audience. So we'll go to the business, there being none, we go to consent agenda, uh, there being no consent agenda, we'll go to I do business, there's one item under your business. Uh, item D, consideration of the motion for a group of restoration, accepting proposal from MEC of Metro, consulting for communication services through the city of Darien. Motion to approve. Mary Sullivan, second, I don't have any discussion. And again, for the public, this is a company, our previous, a social media company, Metro Strategies is no longer able to provide those services. And this is a firm that comes with heavy recommendations. And we've done our due diligence and we find their work to be up to our standards. Mary?
Um, just wanted to, you know, publicly say, um, express my appreciation for the outstanding work Metro Strategies has done on behalf of the city, um, this last year. Um, we've had a great relationship with them. Um, one of the reasons we sought out, um, a communication specialist or firm was based on goal setting that took place, um, in October of 2019. And I think the universal feeling by the council members was that, um, we needed to improve our communications and, uh, bring it a little bit up to, um, date and make it a little bit more modern and definitely take better advantage of the social media platforms. And I really think what Metro Strategies has done with us, um, in cooperation with the city staff and Mary Belmonte has been really remarkable. And, um, I know that they are no longer in the business, but they, I think, are putting us in very capable hands, um, by helping us transition to a new team member, um, that will hopefully continue the excellence that's been established.
Thank you, Mary. I think we all, we're fans. Anyone else? If not, it takes us to questions.
No, we have to roll.
I don't know.
To roll.
Oh, that's right. We need to roll. We have a motion in a second?
Yes. Yes, we do. Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The, um, motion passes. I have a lot of those momentary lapses. Um, I was, under questions and comments and announcements, I just wanted to announce that the Darien Rotary, uh, was the group that obtained the permission from the city to develop the vehicle sticker for this year, 2021. Uh, it's got a very nice logo of the backpack program that the Rotary promotes. It's one of Rotary's foremost programs. Uh, those vehicle stickers are available for a donation of at least $3. I believe they're here at City Mall. I think they're at the police department and other locations within the city. Um, please, uh, please take advantage of this. It's a beautiful sticker and it helps out the Rotary and the Rotary is a lot of fine things for, to do Darien. So that's my one announcement tonight. Anyone else? Mary?
Um, something I should have mentioned during, um, resident communications, but, um, over the, pretty much the course of the month of January, um, especially in my corner of Ward Five, which is the southern, western part, um, far end of Darien, uh, we were experiencing as Comcast customers, Xfinity customers, uh, were experiencing a lot of outages. Um, obviously this became very trying for people who had, um, kids at home doing online learning, people working from home, which is very typical these days. Um, and so there has been, um, a lot of work in our area by Comcast, Xfinity, upgrading lines, upgrading boxes. And, um, I believe that work has been completed. I know there's been, a lot of subdivisions have had, um, emails and, um, Facebook pages, excuse me, communicating this, but I just wanted to make sure it went out. Excuse me, I'm going to take a sip of water. Little tickle there, that it went out to, um, everybody just, you know, in case that they were having problems, that it should be, um, much improved now. And I know as a customer, um, I've seen my service definitely get back to where it should be.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Uh, with that, I will.
Wait, do you have?
I'm sorry, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get a quick second to, uh, compliment or welcome Mr. Jordan Yankee, our new city planner. I had an opportunity today to speak with him for 20, 30 minutes to get his views and thoughts and things that we can improve. And he's got some, some great ideas. He's a, uh, a great hire that we brought on to the city of Darien. And I just want to let the rest of our community know that, uh, we're in good hands. And I think I look forward to, uh, to work with him. And I think, uh, our staff will as well. So great job, Brian and, uh, Dan, uh, bringing him on.
Thank you, Tom. Do you agree as an attorney, man, you had to come in and introduce yourself? Anyone else? Not seen any hands raised, allow us to move into adjourn. Alderman Kenny, second, Alderman Vaughn, all in the face here?
Aye.
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 All right. Any other kind of thing for everyone? And, uh, again, welcome to the bench, Happy New Year. See you guys.
Happy New Year.
You too.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good night, y'all.
Good night.